Can I call item 25? I have to be recused from it because I serve on the AQMD board and this is a matter that's before AQMD.
All right, Councilmember Price.
Mr. President, out of the abundance of caution, I'm accusing myself from item 21 because it's unclear to me what organizations are working on these projects. Additionally, the city attorney has asked me to recuse from item 26 because I am a landlord. And lastly, I'm accusing from item 29 because my wife's employer has worked with this organization in the past.
Got it.
Thank you so much. This is, I think, an issue that is important for all of us across the city, but something that we feel very keenly in Council District Four, which is home to multiple studios and so many people who work in the entertainment industry. Last year, on the heels of dual writers and actors' strikes, or two years ago now, Governor Newsom announced a proposal to expand the film and television tax credit program to offer $750 million in incentives. L.A. is Hollywood. We all know that. And now what we're seeing is a time when more and more productions are moving out of the state and even out of the country because of these tax credits that other places are offering. It has become more cost-effective sometimes to shoot in other places that are made to look like L.A. than to shoot in L.A. because of the costs that we're seeing here. Yet, my husband works in this industry. He's known this for a long time. The crews here are unparalleled. And we need to bring production back. And I think this is an important tool for Los Angeles to be able to see greater economic prosperity and to bring production back to this industry. And the resolution before you really affirms our city's support for this work. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilmember Rahmend.
Good morning, Councilor. Public comment. That's it.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
I see you, I recognize one of your deputy city attorneys here. I remember them many years ago, and they called themselves a certified specialist, and they didn't like being corrected in front of the judge. Hope that young lady remembers that. Probably doesn't. I do have to say thanks to the city attorney's office and the clerk's office. LAPD was schooled regarding providing braille to a member of the public. I wish to thank the city attorney's office and the city clerk's office. According to LAPD, they're allowed to lie under a court case, under Supreme Court case 1969 Fury versus Cap, that they're allowed to lie to people, including anybody that needs help under American Disability Act. So this captain lied. He never contacted Attorney Affairs. Lied, 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 and he's fine with it. So he's a piece of fucking garbage in my book. Thank you.
Good morning. You have, Ms. Herman, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin at the items. Go ahead.
So we have some problems with our streetlights in the Kerwin Place Street. However, the buckethead attorney up there has denied the protest to confirm the assessment. And shall we ask why to the councilwoman, Ms. Joardo, who's ignored her constituents' concerns about their safety for lighting in CD 14? Well, she's not going to address that because after this morning, Nazarian tried to take over her chair in demand that a certain particular person has only one fucking warning. However, when we look at item number two, Mr. Grope, as you try to figure out my nuts, that off 112th Street in the city of Compton, where you know, you know, us niggas roll, understand what streetlighting are for, but we don't need them. We don't need to be exposed to why we run our city the way we do, Mr. Groot, you communist dog eater, because we know what we do in Compton. We know what Compton's all about. Oh, yeah. Look at item number four, Bloomfield, as you slide off your chair to have a discussion. This is in CD 6. CD 6 is the so-called Imelda Padilla, who's not here because Tracy got demoted, just like Monica Rodriguez demoted. But let's stay on topic. Now, look at all these slip and falls. How many slip and falls can we have in Los Angeles?
I'm sorry, Ms. Herman, which item are you speaking to? If to the extent it's the settlements.
Nigga, I'm talking about the slip and fall. The settlement, niggas.
Public comment has already been held, so that is not open for public comment. You're welcome to speak during general if you'd like, but please stick to the items that are open for now.
Okay, so let's go to 38. That's the one that's open, isn't it? Isn't 38?
Public comment is not open on item 38 either.
Again, once again, I'm trying to stay on topic, but I'm being groped by an attorney.
This is your last warning. Stick to the agenda items. I'm going to move you to general public comment. The rules apply to you the same as they do everybody else.
So, so Mrs. Crowley. Mrs. Crowley.
Which item is this about?
Well, goddammit, I'm on non-agenda public comment, you dumb asshole.
One minute for general public comment.
That's why I'm calling on Mrs. Crowley. Mrs. Crowley. Bum, bum, bum. Why did the mayor fire you? We don't know. Mrs. Crowley. Bum, bum, bum. Where did you have to go? We're complaining about the mayor who fired you.
So, Mr. Herman, you're welcome to sing during your public comment, but I'm going to ask that you please do not cup your hands as it creates feedback in our microphones and goes directly into our interpreter's ears.
What's that, fool? What you gotta say, you communist dog eater?
If you would listen while I'm trying to give you instructions, please do not cup your hands.
Dawson was the acting mayor at the time of the fires. What the fuck did he do to stop the fires? He was the acting mayor. And then we got another asshole by the name of Mr. Lee that wants to run for mayor. So we got a fucked up system and we got a fucked up way. So on behalf of Smokin' Scan, fuck you for the record.
Next speaker.
Thank you, President Harris. Dawson, my name's Kevin Anthony. Thirty years ago, I was a job-training contractor for the city of L.A. I was training and placing homeless people in employment. And one of them called me a couple of weeks ago. He said, "Kev, I'm a construction superintendent in Florida. I just built a $90 million shopping center and condo." He was homeless on Venice. And the reason I'm speaking today is that these funds, we know Elon Musk, who gets $8 million a day from government funds, is going to come out here and try to take them. And we need you, our city council, to stand up and to stop him from doing that. I really believed this then. I believe it now. What makes America great is when we invest in our people. Thank you very much.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please begin your Google Translate. Thank you. Item number one. Come to mine, I'm a slave. To lay some money in my game, my day. Then I'm a girl, I'm from my age. So I'm a man, I'm a lady, say, I'm a man, I'm a slave. So I come, I lay, I'm a day. I'm just from my life, I'm from my age. So I come, I'm a man, I'm a slave. Item number two. I'm on some ghetto, I'm a goat. So my guy, I'm from ghetto. I'm a man, I'm a goat. I'm on the subway. Thank you, Google Translate. I'm on some ghetto, I'm a goat. So my guy, I'm from ghetto. I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a goat. I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a goat. I'm a bad guy, he's a goat, I'm a goat. I'm a man, I'm a goat. You're a man, I'm a goat, I'm a slave. Say, don't mind, I'm a slave. So I come, I'm a man, I'm a goat. I'm a man, I'm a goat. So I come, I'm a girl, I'm a slave. I'm a man, I'm a slave. So I come, I'm a man, I'm a goat. I'm a man, I'm a goat. So I'm a man, I'm a goat. I'm a man, I'm a goat. Item number three. Thank you very much, Council President. Google Translate, number three. I'm a man, I'm a goat. 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 I'm a goat, I'm a goat. I'm a goat, I'm a goat. I'm a man, I'm a goat. I'm a man, I'm a goat. Thank you very much, Google Translate. And then general public comment.
One, give one minute.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, I'm asking you to help, especially our Mr. Herman is here. I'm really scared the ICE will deport me out of this country, and I want to ask our council president for help. I'm really in fear that they will deport me, so I want to ask our city council member and the city attorney and our mayor, can we find Mr. Donald Harland? Because if I get married with Donald Harland, then I can stay. If I can get married with Harold Sacks, I can stay. And then if I can get married with Armando Herman, I can stay. So I want to ask all of our Figueroa girl, will you marry me? Please, I want to stay with my American dream. I came here illegally. I avoided the bullets of Border Patrol. I avoided the bullets of LAPD. I want to get married with Donald Harland so I can stay in the city of L.A. Will you marry me? Thank you.
General comment?
And feel free to move the microphone up if it's easier for you. You have one minute for general. Go ahead.
My name is Candace Vick, and I am here regarding the rent registry. I have four questions. One, where did the rent registry come from? I don't remember seeing it on a ballot, as I have voted on every ballot since I was 18 years old. How did it start? Which year did the rent registry start? Where do the funds go that are collected from the homeowners, landlords, and corporations that pay to the rent registry? And who decided on the additional $31.05 for the just cost ordinance? Where do the funds go? I have been trying to get answers to those questions for the last three months, and no one has, they have emailed me and gave me two numbers to the housing authority, and the housing authority is pointing the finger back at the city council. So if somebody in here could please be kind and answer my questions, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
So item 36 is on our Van Nuys City Hall meeting. Happy to see this, wherever she is, Imelda Padilla, thank you. Just want to note that I believe Councilmember Nazarian sent out in his newsletter that this is going to be a monthly thing every last Friday, which I think is great, and I think we should put it in our rules. We should have relevant council rules that we regularly update. I would just note that there are no open agenda items, and when we used to do this back in the day under Herb Wesson, he tried to schedule Valley relevant items open for comment on the Van Nuys City Hall agenda, so they could actually weigh in on that stuff. 32 is the Councilmember Yaroslavski 4118 motion. It is campaign season, so she's got to throw some red meat. Back to the elaborate shell game of 4118. Sad to see how that's turned out. 33 is on E&amp;E Consulting. You all said farewell to David Hiron. I do find it interesting that he made in 2023, between total pay and benefits, $183,000. And now, for eight months of work, he's going to make $150,000. So for all the staffers here, know that you can just leave and go be a consultant for your council member and get a raise from 15K per month to almost 19K per month. Sounds a little weird, but we have to defer to Bob. It's his budget. 28, this is on our local emergency. There's all this bickering still about money for LAFD, and I want to know, where is that transfer? That still hasn't happened. We're not going to have an FSR until March. All this talk about them getting their budget restored, they were being put through a budget reduction exercise just to experiment when the fire was breaking out. How can they make an assumption that the mayor and the council are actually going to come through months later and reimburse them? This is just a masterclass in scapegoating. All Crowley did was refuse to fall on the sword. She was being walked off the plank and refused to fall on the sword, and now you're throwing her under the bus. I think our council president, who, mind you, was acting mayor at the time of the fire and the days leading up to it, should apologize to L.A. There was no contact with the fire chief on his part, apparently, in the days leading up to it. We had a fire. Councilmember Park announced it at the meeting, and then he didn't text her, didn't reach out. 4:00 P.M. was the first time he saw her. This guy loves canceling and curtailing these council meetings and had a perfect excuse to cancel that meeting on January 7th so he could get to work as acting mayor.
You've exhausted your time on this item, but you can continue this during general if you'd like.
I want an after-action report from the council president. Isn't it kind of weird to ask for an after-action report from the person evaluating themselves? Maybe we should just proactively release all those pending CPRA requests that are sitting in front of your office. Maybe I should request a CPRA for a list of all the CPRAs that are outstanding. Bob said after the fire, business as usual cannot exist. We have to fundamentally change the way we do things in this city so that we can grow back in a strong way. Where is that Charter Reform Commission? How do we deliver systemic change? And I just want the council president to know that what's coming this week is just the beginning, and he's just as culpable as the mayor. You made me do this. I did everything I could to avoid it. I reached out to your staff and her staff eight different times. Councilmember Rodriguez is left as a chaos agent. Apparently, I'm going to have to do the same thing now. The only thing that works here is shame. I want you to remember, think back to Nury, Herb, Paul. I don't always get what I want, but I forced every single one of them repeatedly to do things they didn't want to do. And guess what? They walked out a hell of a lot weaker and uglier for it.
Next speaker.
Richard Serrano, general public comment.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
I'm here for the first time to defend the mayor's action. Somebody should be held accountable, but it shouldn't be the firefighters that run towards a fire. Marquis Dawson is the acting mayor. Why was he not in communications with a mayor? Why was he sitting in this chair during a meeting when he should be across the street in the emergency room? No, but we won't do that because he came from the same nonprofit the mayor came from. God forbid the city remembers that stuff.
I'm sorry, can we pause Mr. Serrano's time? I'm sorry. Mr. Spindler, you know these rules. You're here at almost every single meeting. Please do not disrupt another person's public comment, as I'm sure they will not disrupt your public comment. This is your first and only formal warning. I'm sorry, Mr. Serrano. Go ahead.
Three weeks ago, I came here. Black History Month, we sat outside for four hours while you did celebrations in the hall in front of the mayor's office, and Ms. Crowley was sitting there talking to me for 15 of those 20 minutes that I was here, knowing it was going to be long. Monica Rodriguez, if you know something, say something. You sound like Yolanda Saldivar, the one that killed Selena. I know something, but I'll tell you later.
Next speaker.
Thank you. Number four has to do with the sale of alcohol. You know, it's said that these punks, that group of kids yesterday that beat up that one individual had been at a local liquor store trying to get alcohol. Now, you know, I'm against liquor stores, but the fact is, the parents of these kids need to be held accountable. The last thing I want to see is a child go to prison, because you know what's going to happen to them? The same thing that they were doing to that one individual. And even worse, they're going to get raped, sodomized, and believe me, when they get hit, they're going to get hit hard, because if you watch that video, these guys couldn't hurt a fly. When you get 20 kids on one guy and he's barely injured, that's not much of a tough group. They're not from the Vadio, they're not from the hood. So again, let's try to limit our opening of liquor stores. Item 28, ah, let's go to 28. I do stand with Mayor Bass. I'll stand with her until reelection, and then, Ms. Rodriguez, I might be looking at you. But, Mr. Dawson, that falls, this falls on you, sir. You were the mayor at that time. You were the one that failed this city, just as you have taken away our right to call in, and even though I don't want to listen to Jason and his perversions, I don't mind not being able to call in.
So you're welcome to speak during general if you'd like.
But, Mr. City Attorney, you told me that you were going to get the meeting back online so we could at least watch the line, sir.
This is...
Sir, I'm talking about the city of Los Angeles.
Yes, this is general public comment.
And it's leadership, sir.
So you need to speak to the items. I'm going to move you to general.
It's leadership.
Okay. Move to the general, please. You have one minute.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. You know, I made a comment about the tourist production they did the other day. You know, watching it again, it wasn't bad, but it was all 1984. I love L.A. Come on now. This is the city of white, yellow, black, or brown. This is L.A., everybody's town. I would like to see someone with all the talent in this great city come up with a new song. So why don't we try a new song? Why don't we try something different? We have until 28, right? Come on. We can't come up with something better? I look forward to, I'm going to submit something on Friday, Mr. Dawson, and maybe we can get things going, get a new song for the city of L.A. Oh, and if the fire in Porter Ranch would have taken place and we wouldn't have the blessing of God by having rained, I would have called it the John Lee Fire, because I've tried everything possible to stop the, all the smoking and drugs that are going on our Reseda Boulevard. Thank you.
And members of the public, so the last speaker mentioned something about the live feed for the, for the meetings. I just confirmed that this meeting is streaming out on the internet, so you should still be able to view the meeting from online. Go ahead. Next speaker. Mr. Candido, this is no longer, you've been given your opportunity for public comment.
I'll take all items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll begin with item 37. This is $25,000 for quote-unquote additional homeless services. This organization is called SHARE exclamation point. As I've said before, oftentimes, we see motions to put funding towards housing and homelessness, and it seems like a good thing, but what often ends up happening is this is funding that just gets funneled into the homelessness industrial complex. It pays for salaries and wages for people to have cushy jobs, and the people who need it, the unhoused residents, they don't get the services required. So it would be better to just save all this money to acquire housing, to put unhoused residents in and make them housed residents. We have item 34, which is a motion to flush $438 down the toilet for lighting up City Hall. Finance and Budget Committee Chair Bob Blumenfeld said in last year's Budget Day, he doesn't know why these motions to light up City Hall cost over $400. He has no idea, but he thinks we should still do it. Mind you, we have, we're in a budget crisis. We're in a deficit, and if the reserves get too low, we have to declare a fiscal emergency. So I don't think it makes much sense to be flushing $438 down the toilet for the sake of lights. I'd really appreciate it if the council members engaged in conversation would pay due attention to the public that's speaking. That's President Marquise and Hugo. That's Heather and John Lee. That's Nithya and Bob. That's Tim and Adrin. Literally, none of y'all are listening. So I would appreciate it if you would listen. We are under an emergency, rightfully so, because of conditions from the fires. I would love to enroll as a disaster service worker if anyone from personnel wants to reach out to me. Item 29 has Kevin DeLeon's name on it. We're still not past that racist guy that you all embraced after giving up on, after declaring that you weren't going to go through with business as usual. We have a 4118 motion from Katie Yaroslavsky. I'm wondering if Tracy Park puts a smiley face on every motion she seconds or just the ones that criminalize homelessness. Again, I would respectfully ask the president and Hugo and Nithya and Bob and Heather and John to please pay attention. I know that you guys have conversations you want to have, but is public comment really the time you should be doing that?
So you're welcome to speak during general if you'd like.
Thank you, City Attorney. I'll get right back onto the items here. Thank you for having a motion to hold a meeting at the Van Nuys City Hall. That's a good step towards access, is putting the meetings on the last Friday of the month in the Valley. That's helpful for a lot of Valley residents. What would be even better is to reinstate phone comment along with that, so that everyone has better access.
General public comment.
In January, when flames broke out, the fire department was without several of their engines that couldn't be maintained due to budget cuts. Why did the mayor decide to fly to Africa when the wind was high? She knew about the danger. She said in a tweet that it was life-threatening. Now she is scapegoating by firing Chief Crowley. Where's the mayor's accountability? Chief Crowley had to work with me, good funding. Who's to blame for budget cuts to the LAFD? It's not the chief. Council should support Chief Crowley. Congrats on 100K, Smokin' Scan.
Next speaker.
And we get to the first item, number four, CD 6, Imelda, supporting alcohol. Why that crazy, crazy bitch? Look what she's doing here. Stalking the fucking shelves at the Super King. She calls it El Rey Grande. Yes. So you see, you go to the Super King, which is next door to all the other liquor stores, and you know about this, Buck Oscar, as an Irishman. You know, you drink a little too much, then you go home and slap the old lady around. You know how it works. It's, it's, this was what you used to do before there were gyms in the HOA. You know, you get your exercise. A lot of fat fucking men do that, because these fat fucking men can't get the nice skinny girls, and they get drunk, get the courage, and slap their bitch around. So remember, everybody, if you go to CD 6, Imelda says get drunk and slap your bitch. I don't agree with her.
What about number four?
Let's see here. We're going to talk on it again and see if Pumpkinhead picks up on it, that dumb shit, because he's not paying attention today. So, number four, there's a liquor license over.
You've already exhausted your one minute on this item. Please move on to another item.
No, don't do it.
I'm sorry.
Ow!
I told you he's listening. The guy comes from a jungle.
Okay, this is your last warning. I'm going to move you to general.
All right, so now we'll talk to Bob Blob and Blowed, the Hebrew piece of shit on number 30, the Hain Street Greenway project. There is no greenway. There is no green belt. It's all fucking bullshit. Vote no on it. Then we have, oh, is that a liquor license? Let's see, climate consulting, no, it's a consulting contract for Bob Blob and Blowed. He's going to send the money to Israel, in my opinion. Vote no. And then number 36, we're going to have another meeting in filthy, dirty, nigger-infested Van Nuys. No on number 36. Marquisi doesn't want to drive to Van Nuys. He only drives to Van Nuys, in my opinion, if he's looking for pot and prostitutes, the two Ps. But I don't think a Friday morning is good. Let's hold an evening meeting around 8 o'clock, and then, Marquisi, I'll drive you around the valley, and I'll show you where the places are to party after the meeting. We'll show you where you could get the best tables.
Stay on topic, please, or I'm going to move you to general.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to talk about 36. The fucking meeting, introducing, oh, there we go, Unisys. You know, you're looking fatter, thank you.
All right, not on the agenda. General public comment. You have one minute.
And then we look this over here. Big fat cow moo. So as you see here, if you look at the camera, we have the illustrious Sergeant Duarte. We have the illustrious Sergeant Clark, who should be fired, in my opinion, over in the corner conspiring with staffers of Marquisi Harris Dawson, because apparently, somebody got a little shabby today with a Channel 5 reporter. But you can't hear the video. So... So I will attempt to demonstrate what the video sounded like.
Hi, I'm from Graciano, I'm from Channel Five. Mr. Harris Dawson, you're such a beautiful man.
Get out of my motherfucking way, bitch. I'm going to answer your question.
Ow, I got hit.
And that's about how it works.
That's right, people. So remember, if you go near Marquisi, you're going to get bitch slapped by his staff. Keep at least twenty feet away from this abuser.
Speaker, your time has expired.
All items and general public comment.
Okay, good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items, go ahead.
All right, so let's start off with item twenty-eight. That is the declaration of the local emergency related to the wildfires. You know, that emergency that the mayor has been completely bungling the whole time. You know, I mean, she's, she wasn't even in the city to begin, at the beginning of it. And, and you know, she fires the chief after the chief criticizes her. So I guess don't speak about your budget cut because the LAPD needs more money, or you get fired. So, yeah, that's apparently how it works in this city. And I saw several of you were standing behind Bass, supporting her while she did her press conference announcing it. And you know, it's just, it took a while because the fire department was understaffed and they couldn't put out the fires quickly. So more damage, more destruction. You can't even get that eviction moratorium because you got to have the landlords pleased. They can throw their tenants out on the street to get terrorized by the city of forty-one teens. Speaking of which, we have item, where is it? We have a forty-one eighteen motion from Katie Jaroslawski. CD five, no on forty-one eighteen. abolish forty-one eighteen. It's not doing anything. It's, all it's doing is harming unhoused people and forcing them to move down the block while they get no housing and services. So, so now all the people getting evicted because of the fires. Well, now deal with forty-one eighteen. So, great job, everyone. We have item twenty-nine. We're still apparently working on the backlog of the motions from the disgraced racist former council member Kevin DeLeone. Why are we still even entertaining his motions at all? All these motions that he introduced at the end? I mean, is the delay at least that, you know, Isabel was auditing these motions to see what was going on and make with them? I mean, but I doubt it because you were all eager to keep approving his motions during the whole time, whole last council. Okay, so, so, yeah, just to keep enabling that racism. Let's see, even after he's gone, we have, let's see, is there anything else who's going to speak on? We have lighting up City Hall for Bulgarian National Liberation Day. Yeah, fine, but I mean, not that you probably care, are doing much for Bulgarian Americans. But we have the light, but you know, but you do this lighting up City Hall, blowing more money so that you can do this virtue signaling. Why is it so difficult to light up City Hall, apparently? Shouldn't it just be like a, you can easily have the technologists, have the night person just select the color using a computer screen? Come on. All right, so we have general public comment for the, how many of you are listening? Listen, I mean, are you even hearing me with all your staffers?
I'm sorry, Mr. Quan, please do not disrupt public comment.
Can any of them even hear my public comment with all the staffers around the room loudly talking? You know, I can barely hear myself speak here with all this noise around this horseshoe here. So I doubt any of you could hear me even if you wanted to. But of course, none of you pay attention. We've got Soto Martinez and staffer B over there chatting. We've got, you know, let's see, we've got, looks like Padilla chatting with their staffer. I don't know what you're doing up there, Marquise. Why don't you reinstate some call-in comments so it's easier to give public comment at these, at these meetings? I don't know, maybe you're recording that podcast you have, a weird podcast. And finally, you all should be speaking more, out more about all the immigration raids Trump is doing. It's really awful.